I'm showing 5:30. Thank you for joining us tonight for another regular meeting of the Fargo Board of Education. It is Tuesday, January 24th, and I believe there's enough of us here to get rolling. So we will call this meeting to order and invite you to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, when one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I will look for approval of our agenda. Robyn.
I move approvingly the agenda with the HR addendum that was provided at our seats.
Second.
Moved by Robyn, seconded by Seth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to the recognition of the audience portion of our agenda. We have two people signed up to speak this evening. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and homeschool district for the record. Speakers must refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee or student by name. Vulgar or profane language will not be tolerated. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully but is not obligated to respond or debate issues in this forum. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of five minutes. Upon conclusion of this allotted time, a chime will sound and the speaker is asked to conclude. If necessary, a final chime will sound 15 seconds later, signifying the end of the speaker's time at the podium. I will now call our first speaker to the podium, which is Devon Stotinsky. Welcome.
Devon Stotinsky, Horace Mann Roosevelt. I just have one question about the enrollment report. And I noticed that there's going to be a underutilization of South. And I'm curious as to why that is still the case when previous projections said there was going to be underutilization at South. And now on to the other topics from the governance meeting that I have a bit of a concern with. During the governance meeting yesterday, it was discussed about moving the entire topic of the pay discussion to the planning committee outright, unless a board member wished to actually broach the topic again. Now, this begs the question, why would you only leave that in committee if you're already, if you've already been talking about that annually and it's historically talked about annually, as you've all pointed out, a very awkward discussion? I don't have an issue with being paid what you're worth when you're working. In fact, Greg brings up a very excellent point. And that's the amount of time it takes for you all to do your jobs as board members. But that begs another question. I know some members of the board are involved in a great deal of things, and it makes me wonder, as a citizen, is the appropriate amount of time that is required of this board where it's so crucial to our students' education, is the appropriate amount of time being given, attention being given when attention is being pulled by many different factors? Just something to think about. The other part that was slightly concerning, and I'm not sure if it was a misunderstanding on my part, and it very well could have been, in governance yesterday, when you talked about the student behavioral issues plaguing the school. I know that's a major concern for a great deal of parents and even more so for the teachers. But the statement that was used that really made me question priority is that the district is working with local healthcare providers to solve this issue. Wouldn't the first stop be working directly with the parents to solve that issue and then make that a next step? I don't know if I'm misunderstanding steps that have already been taken, but it sounded like, the way it came across was, parents were not in this equation. It was, the school is solving an issue and they're reaching out to local health professionals to solve it and not having that direct parental involvement. Like I said, could have been a misunderstanding on my part, but that's how it came across, listening to it. So that's all from me.
Thank you, Devon. Our next speaker is Matt Kozak. Welcome.
Hello. Matt Kozak, Fargo Public School District. I submitted the following inquiry to the board through the website, the Ask the Board questions. So here it is. Over the past year, at least three staff members at South High School have had inappropriate relationships or interactions with students. AP 5256 addresses the issue, and from my understanding, employees review all policies at the beginning of the year and they sign it, but it's a review on their own. So my question was, has there been any training assigned or a plan to be completed, and what actions are being taken to try to prevent this from happening again? I did receive a response today. That submission was about two weeks ago, or yesterday I received a response, and then a little bit like this morning, I got extra response. But I did, was able to confirm with Dr. Gandhi that, one, no training has been done for Fargo Public School employees, with the exception of signing the policy that is already in place. Two, no future training has been developed or identified to roll out to staff. Three, next school year, only coaches will have an additional training where they have to sign. So not teachers, not the food service workers, not the genders, anyone else, just coaches who do that. And this was confirmed with Dr. Gandhi. But think about that for a second. The first incident allegedly happened with a football coach in January of 2022. No action was taken by the administration to address the policy with the staff. I did an open records request to find out if it addressed on any meeting that policy for the last two years, and it came back with no, no policy was shown up on a meeting. In June of 2022, the board fired a teacher for allegedly inappropriate behavior towards students, that teacher from South Fargo. No action was taken by administration to address the policy with the staff. Okay. Then in November of 2022, a teacher was arrested for allegedly inappropriate relationship with a student. This teacher resigned, so you guys don't have to take action with that. But no policy, or sorry, no, no action was taken by administration to address the policy with the staff. Why? Three times, one year, one school. And then I know you have another one that's out there in the news right now, but at a different school, so that's four. But three at one school, that's a lot for a year. That's a lot in general, but that's a lot for a year. Are you okay with that as the board? I'm not blaming you guys. I'm not saying it's your fault at all. I know you guys can't control who we hire or anything, but are you guys okay with that, that no action has been taken or no training has been done? Board member Nelson at the Boys and Girls Club, if one of your site had three employees in one year, would you not address any training issues with them? Like after you've terminated and took care of the employees, but like with your current staff, wouldn't you want to address that? Board member Christensen, this is your school that you're a liaison to. No actions taken at all to, just even address, even just to do a policy review, just to go over that? Board member Clark, board member Golikson, President Newman, board member Golikson, board member Day, board member Holden, I know you guys care about student safety. Why wouldn't we just do a policy review? I know it's common sense. I would think it's common sense not to have inappropriate relationships with students, but three of your staff last year at one school, it wasn't common sense to them. I'm just asking that maybe you guys make a motion, address it. Dr. Gandhi did respond to me again today. He said he found out, yesterday he didn't know, but today he found out that there's training going to happen next year for mandated reporter training that all staff will have to do. But that's, that's eight months away for that to happen at the current rate? So that's one student every four, every four months at South? Two more, maybe? Are you guys okay with that, to wait a whole school year? Till the end of the school year, till next school year starts to do a training? Or I mean, at least just do a policy review? Go over it, make sure that your staff knows that that's not okay to have these relationships with students. It's very discouraging as a public to not hear anything from Fargo Public Schools, is what action you're taking, and then a story comes out, and another story comes out, and another story comes out. Let's be proactive. Let's do something, guys. Like, you guys are the board, and ultimately, kind of your responsibility, but I'm not blaming you. I know you guys don't interact with the staff at that level on hiring and things. Like, I'm not saying that's your fault. You have no idea. It could have happened to, you know. I know that one of the guys was a prominent member of this community. He was in the orchestra or whatever, or orchestra symphony. Like, you don't know. And so I'm not saying you guys would have known, but like, let's do some action. Let's, let's see what we can do to try to prevent this, rather than take no action. Is it going to take another story, another student? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next is our staff report section. We will begin this evening with enrollment report. This is on your desk as memo 78 with RSP and Associates, and it's presented by Rob Schwartz, who I begin, I believe is on Zoom, and Dr. Gandhi.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. I will, I'll keep it brief. In your board memo, you have a summary of this year's demographic report. We work with RSP and Associates to provide this report, this update to the board on an annual basis. What this report will do is, this will be, just be a launching point to confirm some of the projection data that we've been receiving from previous years as well. Our intention would be to continue with the projects that we've identified in some of our long-range facility plans based on these numbers. But based on the reports today, at a future work session down the road, we would look to dive a little bit deeper, prioritize some of the projects that we've already identified in the long-range facilities and financial plan development for Fargo Public Schools. So with that being said, I will hand it over to Rob from RSP.
Good evening. Do want to do a quick sound check. Are you able to hear me?
We are. Thank you, Rob, for joining us.
Thank you as well for giving me this time to talk you through at a high level what's, what's happening in your district. I'll probably talk a little bit about some of the specific details on certain slides that are more meaningful in understanding what happens with enrollments, development, or demographics. Just for the baseline of everyone who's listening to this, RSP's been doing a lot of work in your district over the years, specifically with enrollment analysis. We do a lot of work in North Dakota. I think here in the next couple of weeks, I'm across the city limits in another district, talking with them about their enrollment analysis. This report is broken up into really five parts. Part one is the enrollment and demographics. Part two is development. Part three is the projections. And then part four are some next steps or some considerations. And then there's a lot of information in the appendix to help you understand some things in greater detail. I also want to note that where you see a star on the left-hand side, where that's a yellow banner and a star, that's going to be a signature slide. And I call it a signature slide because it's something that we must watch in order to see some of the emerging trends changing in your district. So if we start with this 100,000-foot perspective, we're indicating your district is going to continue to grow. You can see that breakdown of what that looks like at the elementary level, the middle school level, high school level. You're going to see things are color-coded, so if you're colorblind, you may not see it. But typically, things that are elementary will have in red, middle school is blue, and then high school is green. I'll talk about how some of these changes are happening because the high school's decreasing, but we'll talk about that when I get to a particular slide. Capacity, and we've done some different things with your capacity this go-around, where we're showing things where you may be over the utilization of the building, and then when you're under 75% of the building. That way, you can use this more as a planning tool in how buildings are functioning. There's quite a bit of developments that will happen. It's actually been happening, but will start to happen at greater rates when the flood diversion project is completed. And that really will start to shift some things from the Horus area to the southern Fargo city limits area, and we'll show you that in some of the maps. Lots of visuals in this report to give you context. Because your district is so vertical, sometimes we have to zoom in in different ways to be able to show you some different things that are happening in the district. Usually, there's going to be an inset on the right side of each of those maps. So we have elementary boundaries, your secondary boundaries, and then a visual of your feeder system where there's dotted lines, that's where it's broken. Solid lines are a complete feeder, meaning in the case of Longfellow, you completely go to Ben Franklin, whereas if in Claude or Hawthorne Elementary, we go to both Ben Franklin and Carl Denilson. So again, just an understanding of that. We break your district into those planning areas, and I've talked about this in previous years. This is a really good value to understand how changes are happening as we isolate with different data sets. So everything we look at from census data, student data, Cass County data, city data sets, other data sets that we create with our understanding of your community, all gets parlayed into a planning area so we can see what changes are occurring. Typically, those planning areas are single-family developments, mobile home developments, town homes, duplexes, apartments. They all have different yield rates. It is a statistical forecast model, so everything is changing differently in all of these planning areas. And it could be what the value of that home is, the square footage, the year that it was built. So again, all the different data sets that we look at apply back to those planning areas. Here's a signature slide with live birth information. And as we focus on Cass County, something that really has stood out is we have more live births than what we've seen in the last few years. When you look at 2021, we had 2,500 live births in Cass County. What we use with this data is we know five years later, the number of kindergartners that are in your district. So when I look at the 2017 row, we had 2,525 live births in 2017. You follow that row over to the 2023 column, and right to its right, you can see we had 851 kindergartners. So this starts to give us an understanding of potential correlation of live births to future kindergartners. It's not a complete apple-to-apple. As you can imagine, people that gave birth to children back in 2017 may no longer live in your district or may have chosen another way in which they're getting their students educated, much like there may be more live births that happened in the November and December months. And so that kind of skews some of this. It's just one metric to understand what's happening with live births and how that may relate to what we potentially could see in future years, which is why we have the green and that tan color for a low-high range with this one metric. We look at your past enrollment. What I want you to really have as a takeaway here, when we look at that senior class, we've consistently been smaller than the incoming kindergarten class the following year. As we start to see the bubble of some of these grades, we look at the current ninth and 10th grades, where there are over 900 students. In order to have that natural bounce that we've been able to have in most years of a smaller senior class being replaced by a larger incoming kindergarten class, our kindergarten enrollment will have to increase. That's one thing to take away from this. The other element that I want you to see with this data, showing it a different way, is how enrollment has changed year to year with each grade. And so I always focus on the three-year average and the three-year weighted average, the bottom two rows in this table, to get a sense of what change we're seeing from a district perspective in each of the grades. A quick takeaway, we tend to always have an increase from eighth to ninth grade. Typically, that's related to private homeschool-type students, pro乡 students that are coming into your system because of the opportunities for those education platforms. Then we also typically are seeing decreases from ninth to 10th, and sometimes from 10th to 11th. Very normal of almost all the districts we work with in North Dakota. Migration, this was something last year that we talked about a little bit, wondering how will this continue to change as we get another year past the COVID experience? And what you see in this visual, it's broken down by elementary, middle school, and high school for the last three school years. Everything on the right-hand side, the orange part of these bars, those are students that were new to that school year, so they were not receiving services the previous year. The bar that's to the left, that's green, are students that were receiving services the previous year of the year being shown, but not in the district. So this gets us that movement of students. And when you look at the movements at the elementary level, there's quite a bit more movements with just number of students. And when we look at that total population and the migration, we're probably on average between 15% and 20% of our population is either new or have left the district in any given year. And all of this starts to apply back to each of those planning areas. The next series of visuals give you some perspective of change that's happened in the last five years. Orange is where we've had an increase. Green is where there's been a decrease. The darker the green is, the greater the decrease. The darker the orange, the greater the increase. Typically, the newer developments are where we see the most prolific enrollment increases. Older developments are dependent on where they are in their subdivision lifecycle. Some are continuing to age out, so they're getting grayer or fewer kids. And some, we're starting to see where we're seeing a resurgence of students. So it gets into when the housing product was built, the value of those homes, and how it's turning over with the people that lived there or when they moved into each of those properties. The heat map gives you a perspective of where those students are in your district, and the red areas are where we have the greatest density of students. It radiates out to the greens and gray, fewer kids. I'm going to pause there with enrollment. Is there any questions you guys have with enrollment's perspective?
Robyn?
Rob, with the outmigration in, in the COVID years, where does the distance learning play into that? Was the distance learning rolled into Fargo Public Schools' numbers? Or was that considered part of the outmigration?
Let me make a note of that so I can for sure give you the right response. But I do believe they were not in these numbers because we're looking at brick and mortar. And I think our focus was how many of them in the years, the last couple of years have come back in. But let me make sure I'm completely accurate with that statement.
Thank you, Rob. It's a foregone conclusion, but I'm curious.
Great question. Thanks, Robyn. Yes, Jim?
I have a question, Rob. On the live birth rate for Cass County, I think that's what you had labeled on that. Do you break out what percentage of those are actually families that live in the Fargo Public School District?
Yes, let me go back to that. Unfortunately, I don't get this where it provides me an address. And so that's why we've made the correlation to what we see for number of kindergartners.
Thank you.
Another great question. Other questions from board members? Okay, thank you.
Perfect. So I'll step into development. This is where things really are kind of exciting with what's happening, trends that are shifting, and then what this means when we start to factor in the reality of the diversion coming into fruition and being completed sometime in the next few years. The first visual that I show is how are some of the variables correlating or not correlating with each other? So the green line represents the census population estimates. And when you look at this, there's changes that have happened when we get to decennial census information because it's the most accurate, right? We have all the long forms, short forms that are filled out. And so there's adjustments that happen with census data. So I'm not concerned with the shifts when we look at the 2009 to 2010 or the jump from 2019 to 2020. Those are just some calibrations of, of what is with real data and what's been estimates. The takeaway is we have more people moving into the school district boundary. And so this is more than the city limits. This is taking into account just Fargo Public Schools. So different than what you may see from city data. The blue line represents the building trend, so the certificate of occupancies. You can see there's been some years back in 2012, 2013, where we had 846, 722 units that were built. Now we're consistently in the 400 units being built and certificate occupancy when people can actually move into those residences. And this would include single-family, multi-family units. The red line represents our enrollment change. What we're trying to start to get a sense of is, as the population is growing in your community and we're seeing building activity, how does that start to translate into what we see for enrollment? And as you can see, there's really not much of a correlation. And I think the pandemic really kind of made a different shift in the oscillation, where it's a little more extreme than what we've seen. What this really starts to get at is the demographic that's moving into your community, and whether they have children or will have children. So one of the things that we continually are trying to focus on is what's happening with millennials. And we're starting to have some really good data to understand they're waiting longer and they're likely to have fewer kids. So that's starting to drive some of the factors of, we look at live birth data, it's not yet showing that. We're still having more live births than what we've seen in the last couple of years. But I think that's being offset because of the number of people that are moving into your community. And it's just one metric to try to look at some of those variables. The next couple of slides helps you understand the value of why we look at planning areas. And what we've aggregated here is by each of the elementary attendance areas, a yield rate of students that we get with single-family developments. If we focus on that bottom row of District K5, back in 2015, that 17 meant we received, we provided services to 17 K through 5 students for every 100 single-family units in the district. It's remained pretty consistent. It's a little bit lower here. It's a little bit lower here in 2022 where it's 16 for every 100 single-family units. Um, but in the last decade, we've built a little over 1,900 single-family units. So quite remarkable to maintain something similar what we had in 2015 with the amount of building inventory. Where you see the green and the orange, that's indicating where it may be with green, um, is three or more students lower than that district average. Orange is where it's three or more greater than that district average. And again, what's really interesting about this is you can see with single-family developments, which attendance areas are yielding more than others. We do the same thing with the multifamily. All I really want to highlight here is, um, we were at about nine K5 students for every 100 multifamily units. Um, that's dropped to eight, but we built over 3,700 more multifamily homes. Multifamilies defined apartments, duplexes, townhomes, uh, mobile homes. So everything is not single-family. The other thing that we tried to hone in on is some districts during the pandemic, we saw some movement to multifamily developments. As a general rule, we didn't see that in your district. It remained pretty consistent, um, through most of these attendance areas. This map is a visual that probably just helps you know what you already know. And that is the newer housing product is predominantly in the south. And we have some smatherings that are in the mid, mid-part of the district and a couple that are on the north side. So the newer product is as we go south. We also looked at the median home values. Um, the areas that are orange and more red in color are the least affordable or most expensive. As we radiate down to the blue areas, it's going to be more affordable. Um, so the least expensive. All of these variables are applied back to those planning areas so we can have some sort of indication what we're seeing with change and being able to predict that with some of these variables. As we look at where product has been built, you can see the smattering of units, um, there down by Davies High School. Um, that's where everything's happening, right? Everything for the most part up north is, is built out. If we're seeing things in the core part of town, it's people developments um, with some new, um, apartments and, uh, townhome-type developments. Another visual that I really like to, um, talk about may not be a signature slide that really shows how, um, development has influenced where we see enrollments. This visual, the purple portion of the bars represent the existing units at the start of the decade. The orange part represents what was built during that decade. And so when we look at the number of units that are built really over the last four decades, um, we've been between 4,600 and 6,800 units that are built in each decade. So it's been pretty consistent. And it's been, as I showed you in that previous map, a march south. And it's kind of been stymied a little bit because we're waiting for, um, some of the flood diversion impacts um, that will definitely change, um, land that's going to be built on the southern side of your district. From the conversations, um, the tour that I did, um, when I was last up in Fargo here a couple of months ago, I believe, um, just looking at what's in the ground, um, meeting with the city to understand how some of these projects are occurring and what likely could happen, um, as, as we really focus on the south side. Um, we developed areas that are currently being built, so that's in the green. Things that may be built towards five years. And then those that may be beyond five years, those are identified as purple. So green is current, yellow is within next five years, then purple out closer to 10 years. All of that information is aggregated back to this table that helps us understand, um, first off, what high school attendance area it's in. So I look at that far right part of the column, um, but focusing on the potential units. And so think about this, when we look at the current or the green areas, those would be shovel-ready, um, where we have access to sewer, water, um, all the infrastructure to make that happen. Right now, we have about 1,900 units, um, that could be built, um, within the next five years. Again, that's all timing of what's the economy, supply chain, um, all of those different things. And that's why, um, we have a timing element that we've built into how we look at any of these growth areas. So I want to pause there with developments. Um, I think I have other slides in the appendix if you want to dig into some of these things in more specific. But any questions about the development?
Do board members have questions or discussion about development?
I have one question.
Mike.
I had one question. Uh, slide, slides 22 and 23 have the same title. Is 23 supposed to be multifamily in the title?
Correct, correct.
I thought so, but it threw me for a loop. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You wouldn't see that because I saw that as I was presenting.
Other questions from board members? Okay, thank you.
Alright, so now the, the cool part. What does this all mean? As we looked at your enrollment, we looked at developments, um, the outlook for, um, your projections at the elementary level. Um, I said had you growing about 150 students. Put my glasses on. The disadvantage of age. Um, so when we look at what's happening with your elementary enrollment, you're currently at about, um, 5,200, 5,250 students. And we have you growing to a little over 5,400 students in '27, '28. Um, at the middle school level, we're a little over, um, 2,500 students. Maybe growing to about 2,650. At the high school, um, we're at about just under 3,600 students. And we have you, um, at about 3,450 when we get to '27, '28. The key to this, um, movement of students is when you go back to, um, slide 14 and we look at the students by grade, um, we have some larger grades that are moving through the high school. And when they leave, like I mentioned, the ninth grade and the 10th grade being 937, 947, um, those are really large grades. As they move through the system, there's some smaller grades, um, that are following them up. And so if we don't see some trend, changes in the trend of cohort change, um, we should see fewer kids at the high school level. Um, so some of this may come into play with decisions that the community may make with the type of programs that are offered there. Um, does that start to become an attraction, um, more than what we've seen? So the high school declining, elementary and middle school increasing. We explain everything on page 33 on the ensuing tables on the following three or four pages. So what you'll see listed here is, um, the enrollments by building. And the enrollments by building, um, we also show what the target enrollment is. So a capacity, uh, per se of, of students that could be in those facilities. And then the grades that are served. As you move to the right, we show you the past enrollment from 1819 through 2223. That's tabulated three different ways. The middle row, green font is reside. So when the students are geocoded, we know where they live and we know how that's associated with every boundary for the grades that are being served in that boundary. So that's reside. The bottom row, attend, because of the student database, we know where the students are actually attending. So different than reside, where are they actually, um, putting their seats, um, in a building? The top row, that res slash ATT is reside slash attend. That purple font, they are a subset of reside. So they reside and actually attend that building for those grades. So let me just help you work your way through this. We'll just start with Bennett. We had 619 K5 students that resided there in '22, '23. And when I say resided there, these, these are students in your school. So this is like your markets, um, forecast. 619 of them are there. 665 are actually attending Bennett. But it's actually a little bit different than the 619 to 665. Of the 619, 607 resided and attended. So we, we lost 12 students to one of the other elementary buildings. But then we gained from that 607 to 665, um, students from other elementary buildings. So that's the explanation of the past enrollment. I also built into this, uh, a way in which you can look at this enrollment from the target enrollment or capacity perspective. So where it would be greater than 100% and where it would be, um, less than 75%. And so this gives you a perspective of how efficient or inefficient or overutilized buildings could be. And as you move to the right, we show you the forecast for each of the buildings based on reside and based on a, a tend. A tend can change quite a bit. Um, it could be you shift a program. Um, you, um, maybe close, uh, some of your, your transfer options, um, to buildings. Um, there could be, um, changes in a family household living condition where they have two addresses and one's in the boundary, one's not in the boundary. So there's some things that can shift with the tends. Um, we always try to focus on accuracy being with the reside because program choices, the, those can, those can shift a little bit. But as you look at this particular page, um, if we focus on attend, the likely students that would be in a building, um, so bottom row of every school, we can see Bennett will run into challenges. If, if we were to continue that, that school choice per se into the building, we'd run into some challenges there. Well, with the tends, um, administration can, um, really be proactive on that and, and, um, move that number where it wouldn't be overutilization. If we look at, um, some of the other buildings on this page, um, underutilization would be Hawthorne and Horace Mann in a couple of years. We see that at Eagles and Jefferson with the attend enrollment. When we look at the second page, again, this is just alphabetical. And we look at Kennedy through Washington. Um, really, we see, um, quite a few buildings, um, that would be underutilized based on that target enrollment. I do want to say something about capacity. Um, and administration may have more conversation to this. Um, much the, much conversation we've had with districts is how we look at capacity post-COVID is a little bit different. So this number may change based on other things that you may need to see happen in buildings, such as maybe more professional development spaces, more conference rooms, um, maybe more social, mental wellbeing spaces. So this is just a, a number, but that may, that number may change. So I'm not overly alarmed by some of these, um, numbers and what that means for underutilization or overutilization because there's some things that probably are more conversations with administration and, and you, the board. As I move into the secondary buildings, um, you can see that we, um, definitely have some overutilization challenges. Um, as we look at Ben Franklin, um, one year in discovery, um, Davies High School, um, will become overutilized in the attend as well. Um, so there's, there's a lot of, of changes. I know there's been a lot of conversations in previous years of how you try to balance out enrollments with, um, some, uh, boundary changes that have taken place. Probably an ongoing effort. Um, the next series of pages are another way of looking at, uh, the enrollments instead of it being in a tabular format, more of a, uh, infographic. And so you see several things for each building. And whether it's reside or attend, um, it gives you some perspective. The red dotted lines are the capacity. So again, you can see how this relates if some buildings are exceeding what the number of students would be residing versus attending. I'm able to see this in an infographic-type format. The last piece of the projections that we tried to help the district with is to guide them towards how you potentially could staff your buildings um, with the number of students that are projected there. So page 40 would be if all the students actually went to the building based on their address and what we're forecasting, this is the potential number of students you would see by grade in each of these buildings. Page 41, we tried to look at those school choices or programs and move those students around to say, here's one of those tools uh, to potentially get at how you need to staff these buildings. So this is just the starting point. Um, there's changes that happened in the enrollment between now and spring break that may, um, indicate whether or not a staff needs to be added or moved to a different building, um, based on what this outlook is. Um, I want to focus, um, in conclusion before I open up for more discussion with you guys, um, really on those, those driving themes of the enrollments. Um, small, larger grades graduating, smaller grades coming in are, are having an impact on what we potentially could see with enrollments. Um, with development activity, um, still some, some very nice activities been happening on the south side. Um, we think once this, um, flood diversion projects are fully in place and you don't have, um, the flood insurance impacts that you do on that south side, that's really going to change the focus of growth, um, from the Horace area outside of your district um, over into the south side. This, this will become, um, back what we were seeing, um, before we needed this flood diversion. We do want to keep focusing on some of these other indicators, um, like my birth data, um, student migration, how that is very volatile. It's quite different at each of the levels and has an impact on what that outlook could be if certain things happen with migration at the elementary level. Starts having an impact at the middle school and on into the high school. So some of our, our next steps in this process is, um, to really work with administration on, um, how you do some of your planning efforts. And you're focusing on some of these variables. Um, what I want as a takeaway, variables on the bottom, orange, if we have more live births or we get a greater share of live births, that's how you can start to look at some of the takeaways between now and the next analysis. Um, if some of those things are trending towards the plus side, we may be under forecasting. Whereas things that are on the green side, um, we would be, um, shifting towards, uh, not hitting the projections and being, um, overstating. Open up for any questions you all may have with the enrollment forecast.
Thank you again so much for that, Rob. Uh, looks like we have a question from Robyn.
Thank you, Rob. That was always very insightful. I appreciate all the work that you do and, and the local visits that you make. Um, a lot of these demographics, and thank you to, advanced, thank you to the planning committee because this is what you really dive into with the long-range facility plan. Um, can, Dr. Gandhi or maybe one of the assistants, can you remind us of what the target class sizes are for different grades? I think we have K2, 3, 5. And, and I, I just want to emphasize how much our district values smaller class sizes. And when you have smaller class sizes, you need more rooms and more buildings and more teachers. So if, if we could refresh our memory, that would be appreciated.
Several years ago, we switched from using just the term capacity because capacity in demographic reports for K-12 schools has oftentimes in the past been used, uh, on a calculic formula based on square footage and the number of students that can be served in a school building to target enrollment. Um, we first redefined capacity and what it means for Fargo Public Schools prior to me starting. That was in 2017. Dr. Gross and at the time, uh, Dr. Agri, uh, the two associate superintendents walked every building with the principals to understand how many students really can be served in that building based on the academic programming that we have and then the guiding, uh, the class size ranges that the board has adopted and, and the guiding principles of our long-range facilities plan. So some of those programming specifically would be special education. When most of our buildings, uh, were built as new schools or older schools at least, they probably were not considering, uh, various special education programs and other ancillary programs that we now offer and utilize those spaces as well. So that was the first shift. Uh, since then, our associate superintendents continue to work and look at programming needs, um, on a, uh... annual or as-needed basis with our principals to know what those numbers are. But then, uh, we also did a second shift in how we now define target enrollment, um, and started using that term about two or three years ago. And that was coming off of a task force that we did in 2019 that represented stakeholders from every school in our community. Um, and what that task force recommended and then the board ultimately adapted is that at the secondary level, uh, Fargo Public Schools wants to also make sure that we have a consistent middle school to high school feeder pattern. Well, if we're going to have a consistent high school to, middle school to high school feeder pattern, then really what we've done is we've looked at each pairing of middle school to high school and then said, okay, the target enrollment now just becomes, you take the larger of the, the two pairing numbers, you divide it by the amount of grade levels it serves. And then if you're now, so for example, Carl Ben or South, I would take South, divide that by how many they can serve. And then take the same number, uh, divided by three or add one more grade level, because South has four and Carl Ben has three. Then that's what the target enrollment becomes for each respective building as well. So essentially, at this time, Davies' target enrollment should really be discovery plus one grade level. Same for Ben Franklin and North, same for Carl Ben and South. So that was the shift that we did since then. So at the elementary level, we're still using programming. At, at the secondary level, we're using that plus the programming piece. Barbara Missy, feel free to chime in if I miss anything else.
Anything else to add? Did I answer your question? Other questions, discussion? Okay, looks like you covered it all. Thank you again.
Very much. You guys have a nice evening. And other questions, um, Dr. Gandhi can reach back out to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, that will bring us to our next report, which is the legislative report. This will be presented by, um, Board Member Robin Nelson and Dr. Gandhi. Thanks for all the work you've been doing with the GAC committee.
Just as part of the legislative update, I will defer to Robin and then feel free to kick off anything that you want to send to me. But I think you can have the list and you want to get started.
Sure, thank you. Uh, the GAC committee met today and, um, the Governance Committee met yesterday, and I look for some guidance as to what, what the board, um, would like to be presented during this agenda session. Um, and, um, I don't want to be redundant in what we share, but, um, so perhaps I would, will share some of the, the, uh, how should I say it, uh, committee testimony, because there was a, a great thing that just happened that you all might not be aware about. We, um, supported two bills that talked about campaign finance disclosure reporting requirements. And there, they, essentially, they both came out of Fargo is what I could gather. Um, we supported both, um, that for any, any, uh, school district over a certain number of residents or students, there would be some campaign reporting requirements, just like most other elected, uh, elected positions within, within the state of North Dakota. And they, maybe the term I should use is they ascended from the ashes. They both received a do not, solid do not passes out of the committee. Um, it, the committee members seemed to think it was a Fargo issue, but whatever the case, uh, I was stunned that they came out do not pass. However, when they hit the House floor, both of them were resoundedly, um, passed. So there were two bills, eleven sixteen, and that talked about the number of residents within each school district. And then twelve fifty-seven, and that talked about the students within school, each school district. Eleven sixteen came to the floor regardless of the do not pass. Uh, that passed fifty-five, uh, to thirty-seven, with two absent. And then twelve fifty-seven talks about the student threshold, uh, for reporting requirements. Um, it, it seemed to be that most people thought that might be easier to calculate for business managers, managers, because Jackie will have one more thing to manage with this bill. Uh, that passed seventy-two to twenty, with two absent. And I want to note that all Fargo legislators voted in favor of twelve fifty-seven. Um, so I think that is a great celebration of, uh, the need for transparency at the school, uh, board election level, because those are becoming more high-profile. Um, I would also say that, um, I don't want to be redundant. Um, we send out weekly updates to our legislators. I really appreciate everybody's involvement. I, I view a lot, I receive a lot of questions from legislators. And quite frankly, I usually key them off to the experts and those are typically our educators or our fin, or, you know, our finance department. And so, um, I, I think our legislators appreciate our insight. I'm also working with the Senate Ed Chair, so, um, lots going on there. Um, maybe I'll move this up to our committee meeting, uh, that happened today. We met, we had some really great dialogue on different, different, uh, legislation and direction on, on how we wanted to communicate. Um, we have a crossover meeting that is scheduled. Uh, Amy's, um, right on the money for getting that through. And our next governmental affairs committee meeting will be February fourteenth at noon. These will, will not always be regularly scheduled every month, just based upon the activity. Um, this is kind of the, um, the season pre-crossover of kind of wait and see, try to advocate, try to look for some amendments. And then after crossover, when things start to wind down, because we start with this many bills and they kind of sift down through committee, we tend to get more, uh, more busy after crossover. So, um, there's, there's, there's a lot going on, let's just put it that way. Um, lots of activity, um, and I'm, I'm not going to repeat everything. The media is doing a really nice job of reporting what's out there. So, um, other than that, I would turn it over to Dr. Gandhi.
No, I would just say that I concur with Robin that, um, there are a lot of bills that we just may, know that may or may not make it to crossover. So at this time, I don't think there's anything additional that I'd say that, um, that needs to be discussed that hasn't already been shared with the board, so.
I will close and say thank you for the governmental affairs committee for taking your, your job so seriously. I know you are, you're paying very close attention and I assume all board members are as well. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for that. Any questions on the legislative report? Further discussion? All right, super. Um, next this evening, we'll have our FVA report. It looks like Kim Rieger's here to present. Welcome, Kim.
As a teacher and leader, I see our staff working rigorously each day to help students of all abilities learn and develop necessary skills. In all my conversations with teachers, not one has ever expressed a belief that this student just can't learn and grow. FVA is proud of the overall growth mindset of our teachers, both special education and general education exhibit and the commitment they demonstrate to students of all abilities. FVA would like to remind the board of the Salary Commission finding, which said that we should work together as a unified front in the effort to ensure that the North Dakota State Legislature adequately fund public education and strike down any legislation that would diminish the integrity or assist in the systematic dismantling, dismantling of public education. FVA continues to stand ready and collectively advocate on legislative bills in order to better support the students and staff of our district. We hope to hear from you in advance of any public support for bills so that we can best accomplish that shared activism. And we were able to start our calendar committee tonight with Dr. Gross. So look forward to that work and I would really like to see the board maybe move EL fourteen sooner, because it comes up after our work is complete. And we are also ready for our negotiations, so we look forward to hearing when that will start, I believe in early February. So, thank you.
Thanks for being here, Kim. Any questions for Kim? Okay, uh, Dr. Gandhi Superintendent Report.
Just one item, uh, heads up to board members that, um, you can expect potentially the need for a special board meeting for two items. As you know, over the last couple of board meetings, we've gone through a couple of, uh, board approvals for purchasing of some land. Uh, those agreements, because of the complexity of having three entities at play, were, um, developed over the course of several months and they had some deadlines for getting plotting done and for some other things, uh, that because of just entity approvals from some of the other entities, um, for example, getting legal councils to approve the agreements and then, um, our schedule of when we meet publicly as a board as well, um, those probably won't meet or we won't meet those deadlines. So the special board meeting really will just be for a couple of amendment, amendments to extend some dates regarding those purchase agreements. Uh, should, the, once those agreements are all in hand or those amendments are in hand, Tara will lead that process and work with Anne Marie and, uh, Dr. Newman to, to schedule that special board meeting as soon as we can. If it happens to be next week where I will be in Bismarck for the North Dakota Association of School Administrators, um, it really should just be passing a couple of amendments. Um, so I've told Tara to kind of take the lead on that as well. So just wanted to give you guys the heads up that that might be coming.
Thank you for that. Um, are we all right to keep rolling? Looks six thirty? Okay, um, I look for approval of our consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda, um, along with our, the HR addendum that's at our station.
Second, okay, moved by Seth, seconded by Nikki, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll move on to our business section. Um, our only agenda item this evening is the North High track donation. This comes to you at your desk in memo number eighty. Uh, I'll just recap a little bit. Um, at our regular board meeting on January tenth, uh, we approved a policy change to EL eight. Uh, the financial administration was, which states that the superintendent may not pre-authorize or commit to acceptance of funds raised or fundraising activity in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars for designated purposes unless it's authorized by the board. Um, so FPS has been contacted by an individual requesting to be authorized for a fundraising effort that would change the color of the North High School track project from red, um, to blue and gray. At our meeting, um, for Planning Committee on January seventeenth, we reviewed the impact of this fundraising on district resources, district personnel, and cost differences to maintain, um, the red coloring of that track and the district's ability to sustain the new track color in the future. So following review, the Planning Committee recommends that the Board of Education preauthorize the fundraising efforts for this project. Robin.
I move that the Board of Education preauthorize the acceptance of funds raised to change North High's track from red to blue and gray. So long as the fundraising group meets all the criteria as follows, the processes identified by administration regarding the project.
Second. I believe this is worded incorrectly. It says track from red to blue to gray? But it should be, we're changing it to red from blue and gray, correct?
No.
No, no.
Oh, got it. Spartan colors. Oh, okay, got it, got it.
We wanted blue and gray.
Clear as mud, I apologize, speaking of turn. Okay, so mo, motion by Robin, I'm sorry, seconded by Katie Christensen. Any discussion from board members?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Uh, Keith, Keith Lehman, Lehman was in the audience. He is a champion of, uh, cross-country at North High. And I think the acceptance of this, not that this should weigh our decision, will make him very happy. So, uh, those of us that were, were raised as Spartans, um, understand the spirit of this. And this does not cost the district anything. So I think in the spirit of, of the donor's intent, I, I would hope that we pass this recommendation.
Any other comments from board members, further discussion? Seeing none, Anne Marie, I'll have you call the roll.
Berkland?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Gollickson?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Um, it has been indicated to me we likely will need to, um, use our possible executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy this evening. Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make it. Um, I move that the board move to executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted under North Dakota Century Code forty-four dash zero four dash one nine point one and fifteen point one dash sixteen dash twenty-two.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Reese?
Yes.
Hey, yeah, this is Jim. I'm going to sign off, uh, because there's no way to verify that I'm the only person in the room in California. So I'm not going to sit in for executive session. And I believe after executive session, we are done. Is that correct?
Um, yes, unless we want to allow Jim to do his member report at the current time. If you wanted to share your board member report, we're happy to hear that now before you sign off.
Uh, really, all I had to report was I was at Governance, uh, virtually. And I was able to make it to both the negotiation and the Planning Committee meeting before I hopped on a plane to come out to California, uh, to watch my youngest get married. So that is.
Congratulations. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, did you, Anne Marie?
You just need to do a voice vote.
Yes, okay. So all of those, or any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. We'll get set up to go into executive session.
Welcome back. It is 7:30. We are out of executive session and going to move on to the board report section of our agenda. Katie, I'll start with you this evening.
I, since our last meeting, I attended the, my two committee meetings, the GAC and Communications, and I don't have anything else other than that to report.
Thank you. Greg.
I also attended those same two meetings that Katie mentioned, but I also attended Negotiations Committee. And I'm trying to remember days. I believe it was last week I went to the Stick It to Cancer event where basically every hockey team in the Fargo, West Fargo area played cancer to raise money for charity. And I was up way past my bedtime, but I did get to see a shootout victory from Fargo North, and that was pretty cool.
Excellent. Thank you. Nikki.
Thank you. Since I wasn't able to attend the last board meeting, I'll just give you a real brief because it does include some liaison information. January 5th, I attended the Negotiations Committee meeting. January 6th, I was at Eagles, which is one of my liaison school for about two hours that morning and met with staff there. It was a very good couple of hours. January 7th, National PTA put on an all-day leadership training. That was great. It was like from nine to five or so. January 16th, again, full negotiations meeting, full committee. January 17th, I went back to Eagles and I visited several classrooms and visited with several teachers. Did a little observing. It was an awesome experience, and in fact, I am going back to do more here in just a couple of weeks. Also that evening, National PTA Legislative Training for visiting with our senators, which is upcoming. January 20th, CEA met. Our focus there is for fostering more staff engagement, ways to, ideas to go about that, and discussing a more active student voice, trying to figure out what that looks like, what would be a good way to proceed with that. January 23rd, Governance. And I also attended the Davies Band Concert, which was a combination of Discovery and Davies. It was sixth through 12th grades. The idea was to give the younger band students an idea of where they could go if they stayed with their musical choices through, through high school. It was, it was wonderful. It was fabulous. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seth.
Since we last met, we've had Negotiations Committee meeting. I was at Governance yesterday. And other than that, just continued dialogue with the FEA as we gear up for negotiations.
Thank you for that. Naima.
Thank you. On the 17th, I was, I attended the Plan, the Planning Committee. And then at 3:40, I was at North High School and waited for the bus to, to come to see if is the bus going to come on time or not because, because apparently there has been a lot of complaining about it, that the bus does not come on, does not come on time. So on that, there was a night before they told me that to, to see if, just come and observed it. So I went over there and, and observed it. And then in the evenings, I came back. I went and saw the play at North High again. So I stayed there probably until 8:30, just to see how our students are doing. And they did amazing job with the play, which I did not attend. I think Katie attended it. So, and her too. So it was really good. So then I saw the play first before you guys see the whole thing. And then, and then on the 19th, I went and met with Grants at the Caravans. So we just had a conversation, and then I was able to eat some lunch with, with him. Saw how the lunches are and kind of understand why. But anyway, the lunches are good. I didn't complain. First, I was kind of like, hmm, okay, but it, it's workout perfect. And then on the 20th, we had that GAC Communication, the GAC Communication that we had, maybe I said it wrong. Communication Advocacy. We had that one on the 20th, so I attended that. And then on Monday, I was able to meet with Principal Donna, which, which was yesterday, of course, at Long Hawn. So I get to see the, the facility that they had over there. I took the tour. Get to meet with the, with the teacher. Just, we had a great conversation. Get to see what they do really because after reading what we just, after reading the survey that was sent out. So, and then it, it's already been scheduled, so I was able to see the thing that they are doing, what are they doing? And just, I just want to have understanding at firsthand, so, so that way I can have understanding when a decision come. How can I be able to help them in, in that decision-making? Because these are the crucial meeting that definitely need to be happening because, so we have an idea. What are they doing in a classroom? And right now, I feel like, you know, even in EL2, I need to learn more about what's really going on because I was one of those student who was EL. And even though I did not speak the first language, I had amazing teachers, you know, who will step up to saying, Amal, you can do it. And I never knew that I can end up in this board. So it take dedicated teacher for, for individual myself to be where I'm at today. And I hope that, you know, teacher do understand that they do play a crucial roles on those EL student adult education and so many more to make an impact in their lives. So I'm a product of it, and I think that they are doing a great job. But I want to see it more because I want to be able to tell them, hey, if I can do it, if you motivate those children or those student, they can become somebody too like me. Thank you.
Thanks, Naima. Melissa.
Yeah. Last week, we had a four-hour planning session for the Negotiation Committee on the 16th. And then later that week, we had a CEA meeting on the 20th. I did attend the Fargo North One-X. Katie Christensen's daughter, or son was in it, and they were fantastic. It's a really great show. And then this week, we had GAC over the noon hour, and then my Calendar Committee started meeting. So I had my first Calendar Committee. And then later this week, I'm going to visit Carl Ben Ielson, one of my liaison schools. And then we have a new Negotiations Meeting on Thursday.
And even though I did not speak the first language, I had amazing teachers, you know, who real step up to saying, Namom, you can do it. And I never knew that I can end up in this board. So it take dedicated teacher for, for individual myself to be where I'm at today. And I hope that, you know, teacher do understand that they do play a crucial roles on those EL student adult education and so many more to make an impact in their lives. So I'm a product of it, and I think that they are doing a great job. But I want to see it more, because I want to be able to tell them, hey, if I can do it, if you motivate those children or those student, they can become somebody too like me. Thank you.
Thanks, Namom. Melissa?
Yeah. Last week, we had a four-hour planning session for the Negotiation Committee on the 16th. And then later that week, we had a CEA meeting on the 20th. I did attend the Fargo North 1X. Katie Christensen's daughter or son was in it, and they were fantastic. It's a really great show. And then this week, we had GAC over the noon hour, and then my Calendar Committee started meeting. So I had my first Calendar Committee. And then later this week, I'm going to visit Carl Ben Ielson, one of my liaison schools. And then we have a new negotiations meeting on Thursday.
Great. Thank you all. I'll briefly share President's Report. Since we last met, Planning has met. I took part in the FPS Sanford Legislative Meeting. My Council on School Health meeting has met. I attended the NDSBA Brunch and Learn. The topic was North Dakota Anti-Gifting Provisions, which was really interesting. I wrote a piece that ran in the Fargo Public Schools newsletters about the functioning of our Governance Committee. And hopefully that was helpful to people. And, and then on the 21st this past weekend, I attended the 2023 High School Choral Festival, which was really cool. It was area high school choirs, our Davies Vavache Choir performed at that. It was held at Concordia. It was sort of an all-day event, but very cool. Governance met yesterday. And then I just wanted to give kind of a shout-out to some of our teachers because I experienced this week a personal phone call and a voicemail to my cellphone from one of my children's teachers. There was about a minute, over a minute in length, just saying really positive things that they've seen for our kids. I told Dr. Gross and Dr. Gandhi about that, but your heart always jumps a little when, when, you know, the teacher calls your cellphone. But it was really nice, and I'm so proud of our staff. I mean, it, I know it takes a lot of extra time and energy to go above and beyond to do that, but it means a lot to the families. So sometimes we don't always see the behaviors at home in our children that our teachers see. So thank you to our teachers who take the time to do that. With that, we'll affirm our next regular meeting date, which is Valentine's Day, February 14th. And it is 7:40. We are adjourned.